The time is now seven PM on March twenty, what is it? Twenty eight, twenty eight?
Yes, sir.
And I, uh, this meeting of the Board of Trustees is now called to order. That record showed that this meeting was duly posted in accordance with section five, five, one point oh four three of the Texas Government Code in regards to posting of public meetings. There's a quorum of members present. At this time, would you rise? Would you please rise for a prayer led by Ms. Smith and our pledge to lead into the following.
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together and for the purpose of doing what's right for our kids and our community. Be with us and guide us on decision makings and be with us always.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At every meeting, the board sets aside time for a public comment. Has there anybody signed up for public comment? There being none, we'll continue on. We also set aside for public testimony. Has there been any, somebody signed up for public testimony? There being none, we'll move forward to our favorite thing to do, which is recognition. And I see that we have, uh, people to be recognized here, so that's, that's good. Ms. Fuener?
Uh, tonight, we've got our girls' powerlifting team that's coached by Coach Fueners and Coach Ryle, and I will let them take over.
A little bit on some of our recognition, we had three girls qualify for state this year. Uh, we should start off with our freshman, Arabella Zarani. She came in eighteenth at state, she PR'd on squat and bench. And Deanna, she did a great job all season long. Uh, up next, we had Ally Sort. These are both their first years doing powerlifting. She finished out at seventh place at state, she squatted three hundred and fifteen pounds and bench pressed two twenty-five. And then, of course, we have Kalen Mendez, who's our reigning state champion in the one thirty-two weight class. And is also a state record holder for squat, squatting four hundred pounds.
That is getting.
Come on, ladies, come on, come on. Coaches, come on up also, please, if you don't mind. Right here in the middle, Kalen. We're gonna get you, we're gonna get you everything. Coaches, why don't you come and get on the outside because.
Congratulations, great job.
I'm super excited to watch y'all. Ally, good work. Zarani, there you go.
Get your picture real quick and then.
I want you guys to stand in the back. It's a little tight in there, but you got it. All right. Take a view, just keep smiling.
Can I, can I make them laugh or back here?
Congratulations, girls.
Why don't you stay up here for just, Kalen, why don't you stay up here with just a second for Ms. Rod, come on up? Because I think they are the, uh, come on up, girls, because we're gonna recognize our, uh, state qualifying cheerleading squad. And for the majority of them, they're all, oh, there's. They were all here, so they were all at, uh, state for cheerleading back in January. They couldn't come, they've gotta be conceived by the small representation this evening, that the majority of them are at practice tonight. So they're getting ready for, fill in the blank for me because I forgot already.
Probably a spring pep rally coming up pretty soon.
So, well, you would know.
I do, I, I, I have no idea where it would be.
Do you have certificates for them?
Oh, yeah, we do. Sorry, sleeping on the job.
Ally, I wish your dad was there.
I'll sign them in.
I have a pen for you.
You may sign them, is that?
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that, I didn't, I thought they were already.
For the other ones, sign.
This is for the entire cheerleading squad. So we'll get back to Anna. Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Good job.
Well, you get up there, Mr. Russell, get in there.
Kind of stand behind him, maybe he doesn't look.
Hide him.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, girl.
Using a computer generated. As far as the powerlifting goes, I, I've, that program is, is such a success. I don't know how many, I know that I had like thirty, thirty, or at least twenty-five girls or something in powerlifting.
Qualified twenty-three to regionals, we had twenty-seven total.
Twenty-seven total, and on the boys' side, how many?
We had about sixteen boys show out and we had three qualified for regionals.
So that is a, that's a program that did not exist, that, that did not exist, uh, up until two years ago, right? And so that's, that's all kids that wouldn't be involved in a spring sport. Some of those kids wouldn't be involved in any, some of those guys, some of those kids don't do anything o- other than powerlifting. I know there's, there's a whole handful of that. But anytime you have kids coming out in that number, it's impressive and it speaks well for the coaches.
For sure.
And, uh, I'm, I'm super appreciative, appreciative to y'all. I know the board is, that the town is, uh, getting kids out there and, and competing in powerlifting, which actually is a, is a, is a pretty fun sport to go to the meets in. And I still remember some of the, some of the powerlifting meets that we went to when, when we were in high school. It's a pretty cool deal, so that, that speaks well to y'all. And obviously, s- state qualifiers, that doesn't happen each and every year. That's, that's really, really cool, and some of the weights y'all threw around is just amazing, so.
Well, how the state champion did next year, because she's got another year, right?
I don't know, it's. Seems like the, seems like the pantry may be full because we, they're all coming back. I mean, that's, that's a lot of pressure, but.
Well, and I, I just need to add this because, Board, if it weren't for your vision and foresight to look, the weight room we had was inadequate for these kinds of activities. These girls and the entire team, along with other people, get to get in the weight room at one time and all be coached and all have access to their own stations. And it's only because of your vision and, and forethought that we are where we are. So you must look at yourselves and, uh, it's just a great program, it's a lifelong skill. So I applaud the board for, for their, uh, vision.
All right, now they are signed, so don't try to sell them. All right, that takes us to our next.
And that would be Ms. Starry, Remarkable Risper.
Remarkable Risper. So tonight, we've got two ladies here, um, Ms. Bowman, you'll stand up in this hall, come on in here. I can stand in the middle. Um, these ladies.
And we don't have Ms. Tovar.
Yes, Lucille Tovar was our third one that was selected for the month of, um, December and January for trustworthiness and valuing others. And basically, what's happening here, as we've shared with you before, is the colleagues that they work with are the ones nominating them for this, for these, uh, honor. Um, they stand out, they exhibit these traits every day, all the time. So it's not like it's a one and done thing, they do this all the time. So we're, uh, very excited to share them with you and, and honor them for the things that they do for our kids every day and for our, for our staff as well. So, um, we've got Michelle Bowman and Deborah Sopak, and like I said, uh, Lucille Tovar is from your side and she was.
To add, to add to what, while she, they're getting their picture taken, I'm gonna try and embarrass them a little bit. Um, one of the things that, these things that they're being recognized for are found throughout the staff. What I want the board to recognize is these two were not only recognized for being intentional in doing these things, but they were picked by their peers to really go above and beyond. I mean, it is, they were just like, recognized as, it's not just something they do on a regular basis. It's that they help others to achieve. Um, so it is really a huge honor, I think, from my perspective. And Alicia has done a phenomenal job going out and, and reaching out to our staff to get them to recognize their peers. And both Deborah and Michelle have been recognized by multiple individuals. It wasn't just one person who wrote them up, there were lots of people who recognized both of them. And I think, um, I'm really proud that they're with us in this district. After I embarrassed, uh, Deborah in front of all of the individuals from Needville and gave her the award, um, I tried to convince her that retirement was not in her future. Unfortunately, she has not rescinded her resignation, so. Well, Paul, it was, if it was a choice between you or her grandson, then she has a lot of choice.
No brainer. No brainer, thank you.
Okay.
We're ready to move on, sir.
All right, that takes us to our consent agenda. Item number four is our consent agenda. According to local policy BE, a consent agenda is provided that includes items of routine and reoccurring nature grouped together under one action item. Uh, board members have been furnished with background information on each item. Is there anything that the board would like to consider individually and to be acted on by a separate vote? Nope, there being none, I will seek an, a motion for the. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, second about Ms. Smith. And all, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously with this, uh, obvious, not an attendance. That will take us down to five, uh, B one.
Yes, sir.
COVID nineteen ESAR expenditures, safety and security.
Yes, uh, the biggest, uh, update that we actually have regarding safety and security, uh, has taken place at the high school. We have now, uh, been able to build our foyer in the, in the entrance of the high school. Uh, it's now, when you walk in, it's, everybody's behind glass. Uh, so that has actually been installed. And we now have, um, a VCS, once again, we don't have our round gate in at the, at the track. They will be, they, they will be here Monday. They were working on other things because they're still trying to get our Aphone system actually set up on the, uh, on the different campuses. And, uh, then they will be here on Monday, he's gonna meet me on Monday morning to start the install of the round gate at the stadium.
Yeah, I just wanna add something to the, the work. I, first of all, I, I'd like us all to recognize and, you know, just give a few seconds of thought and prayer to the individuals in Nashville. But I would like everybody to recognize that exactly the video that came out in Nashville, where someone just went up and shot out the front windows to, two sets of doors and then just penetrated the, the building immediately. Those things are what Mr. Wells has worked so hard with and putting that, placing that film, because the glass just doesn't fall out like you'll see in that video. If you haven't seen it, take a second. So, um, that's kind of where Paul is with the, with his front gate, um, with that foyer, that we have that, that film on there. Um, we also have it at all of our campuses. And, um, the Aphone, I can tell you that the middle school and Hutchins have just been very praiseworthy of stating that they can now just sit at their desk and look at a camera and decide whether they should let somebody in or not. So I think all of those things go right into what you saw yesterday, um, with the tragedy in Nashville. That I can't tell you that it won't stop and that it will stop the tragedies that could occur here or elsewhere, but it will slow down the perpetrator. So, um, I just want everybody to realize the, the hard work that Mr. Wells and, um, Donald have put into trying to provide us a safer and more secure environment.
Are the cameras up at, in the, the Aphone in, uh, the junior, at the middle school?
Yes.
And they're using, so when you're in the little hamster trap area, you.
You can't even get in there.
Okay, so it's locked, so you're, you're outside, you're actually outside.
Yeah, they're.
You're actually, good, good.
Yeah, those, they're, they're, they're up.
And I thank Mr. Wells because as soon as we put those in, the first day when I wanted to push that button and I wanted to see Ms. Washington inside, I got the biggest bear hug I've ever gotten. She didn't have to get up out of her chair and go walk all the way to the front door and leave the front desk insecure.
That's awesome.
She's not gonna get her steps in now.
She, that is exactly what she said.
Her, her Apple Watch is gonna take something out of her. Okay?
Anybody have any other questions about that? Mr. Wells, you wanna move on to, to B two?
Yes, uh, we have, uh, we do have several projects, as you, uh, may know, with the installation of all of our, uh, AC units continuing to go on. Uh, we're also in the process of, um, looking at the fencing. Uh, we're gonna actually start our fencing projects once we visit with you guys at the next board meeting. Um, but the plan will be to probably try to start those, um, at Northside, then Mayette, uh, to get those, those fence projects up. Uh, just so that everybody understands, there is now a requirement, if we use fencing, we have to have, uh, it has to be a certain height and it can't be something that you can just see through. So just being able to just put up the old, you know, five foot or whatever hurricane fence, uh, we, we cannot, we can no longer use that type of, uh.
So our fence at the high school that we put up a few years ago would no longer pass because you could see through it?
No, it, well, it would pass on height.
Height, but, but they would, you, you couldn't use it because you couldn't, you can still.
No, they want, yeah, they want you to, to, to put up a.
A barrier.
A barrier type fence where you can't see through. So.
How tall is it? How tall is it?
They have to be at least six foot and recommend eight.
Recommend eight.
I would think eight's better.
Sure. So those are, those are some of the projects that we have going.
No, that's good, Ms. Fellers, uh, walked in. So Ms. Fellers, we're just gonna ask you about your Aphone.
What's that like? I just finished a paragraph.
No, 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 we, we knew where you were. Um, at least Ms. Anderson and I knew where you were. Your Aphone at your front door, how do you feel that that's working for you?
Oh my gosh, thank you so much, from Ms. Washington. Thank you, thank you, thank. And this morning, my key wouldn't, I couldn't make my key work, and so even I got to check it and I pushed it back, and Ms. Washington said, how can I help you? I said, it's Ms. Fellers, open the door. But yeah, no, it's been working really well. And it, it, I know this isn't why we did it, but man, it looks professional too, like it just, it's just really nice. And it changed the way that we configured it because how it used to be was, you, the most exterior door was the one that was, um, open, so that you could get into the foyer, right? And then you would be inside of the building with a glass door, one layer of glass doors, and that's where you're busted. Now, it's, the, the safety has increased, the glass doors now help a little bit because you have glass door space and glass door again. So if I was out there and I was shooting through, you know what I mean? I'd be penetrating two layers of glass plus the space in between. So we know we have the little film on it, which kind of slows it down. So it probably would be a little harder to penetrate that second set of doors, so it's good.
And, and that is the, the safety glass on there.
Wastes more time.
For the most part, you cannot, if you're, you, when you're standing out there, you can't, you really can't look into the, so the school per se. I mean, you can see a little bit into the halls, are there any, is there any need to?
You, you can, you can see, you got a pretty good struc- struc-, uh.
Side line.
Yes, and so we have been discussing, there was a company that came, just a vendor that came in the fall, and it's somebody that had done something at a previous school I worked with, so you know, they're, they're trying to give me the, the, the hard sell. And, uh, what they were talking about is that film that, you know, goes on the glass and maybe it's a graphic, you know, so they can't.
That's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, and so we had, we had an office meeting and I asked the ladies, like, over the next few months, which it has been a few months now, but think about what would that, how would that impact us and safety from our viewpoint? If we in the office couldn't see in there, would it impact us? Where would we, where would be our next line of visual? Uh, and it would be that window where Ms. Washington, where the receptionist desk is and the circulation desk kind of goes like that. She has a window right here where, like, kids can give her notes and things. That would be our view into the hallway, really from the office, that's all that would be left.
Is there any reason we couldn't wrap? I mean, no, we know about school safety, every, every meeting you go to, they say they don't shoot but they can't see.
Line of sight.
So cut off line of, is there any reason we wouldn't just wrap the outside door glass?
So you can't wrap just the glass, not the metal, I did that at Victoria West.
Right, like, 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 uh.
But now with the bell system, think of this, with the, the doorway system I'm talking about. You wouldn't wrap necessarily the exterior door, you could wrap the second layer.
Right.
Which we didn't have that advantage before. We were, you know, we, we thought they were opening the door and they would get in, and we're trying to, our line of sight to see who's coming.
But if you wrapped this, if you wrapped the first layer, you wouldn't have to compromise what you're talking about where, where the office staff couldn't look into the school.
Correct.
We want y'all to be able to look into the school, but if we, it, if you had a nice, like, like what Northside has.
Yeah, but we didn't know that prior to the bell.
Right.
We didn't know that, um, because we thought it would be the way that it was before, where you, you had full access to walk in, the first set of doors would stop you the next. So we were thinking we would either be wrapping the second set or the hallway. But now, I guess, honestly, the smart thing to do would be to wrap the most exterior.
You, you, you can do that, or you can do, or, or you can do like, uh, mirror tint on your interior doors.
Where you can see out.
Yeah, or you can see out and it reflects everything.
It's such a small area, it's not like, Northside is, is a huge glass front, but this is a tiny little square footage to do. I mean, it'd be worth looking into.
Again, we're, we're not as concerned with the cost as we are the safety. So Northside is wrapped, Utes is wrapped, and, uh, Mayette is wrapped. We haven't.
Not, not.
You're not wrapped yet?
I'm patiently waiting.
But we have you scheduled to be wrapped.
I have, yeah.
Yes.
With a graphic.
With a graphic.
Graphic.
It's wrapped with the safety glass. It's.
Everything's safety glass, but we're talking about the, the visual wrap.
Can't see here.
Good update.
Any other construction projects you need to talk about real quick? Two for.
That takes us to six A one, Ms. Starry.
All right, so, um, for many years, um, our district had used Renaissance as our universal screener. And in the past two and a half years, we had switched to MAPS. It was, it's popular, a lot of school districts use it, um, so we gave it a try and we've been using it for the last two and a half years. Um, a lot of concerns from teachers about the time it takes to give that test and the data they're getting back, the use of that data. So it's not that they're not getting different data, but they're just, they get a score, they don't have a lot of meaning to the score. A lot of teachers couldn't tell you what it meant. Um, so those were just some concerns they kept bringing back up to us or whatever. So we looked back at, looking back at Renaissance again, um, and I met with the vendor to see what's changed and what's going on with it since the last two and a half years. And they've actually expanded it a little more, so basically, we're proposing to go back to them. We would get the same basic information on growth. So MAPS gave us growth data, we screened kids three times a year, all the way from kindergarten up to ninth grade. So we're proposing to put that back in place with STAR and be the same thing, we'd screen kids three times a year, we'd go through eighth grade. Um, math, reading versus MAPS does math, uh, math, reading and science, so it is one less, uh, subject area. But our main focus is the STAR RIN test, the time it takes for a teacher to give the test is substantially less. And so it's not taking up so much classroom time for a teacher to give it, or multiple days if you're looking at secondary because they can't get to them in one classroom area. Um, so that was a big, big push from the ele- from the elementary end, um, it's kind of the same for middle school though. Um, then the other thing is the STAR RIN has now added some features that we're gonna get kind of as bonus, I guess you would say. So not only will we be able to, uh, universally screen them three times a year, we're also gonna have progress monitoring pieces that, uh, campuses can use. So it's one minute quick check things that they can do, like fluency checks, basic facts checks, depending on the sub- subject you're talking about, that they can do between the screeners to see if the kids are growing. And also it helps with our MTSS process, having data for them to see if the student is making progress or not and what areas do they need to address, put more interventions in place. Um, so it's, we're getting more bang for our buck, um, the price between the two, you're only looking at about a forty-five hundred dollar difference and it's, it's actually STAR RIN is less, but it's not really when it came to it, it wasn't the price, it was more about what are we getting? What are some features that we think are gonna be more beneficial that we're gonna get from STAR Renaissance versus we're getting with MAPS? Um, are we losing anything from MAPS other than science? No, we're not, uh, because anything we were getting from them, we can still get from the STAR Renaissance platform. Um, I know the principals are here, Rebecca could probably speak on it, Mari, I don't think you had any experience with the STAR RIN. Uh, Elizabeth had shared that she was excited about it, changing back, um, so that's what we would.
Yeah, whenever I was mentioning it to my teacher leaders and to some of my teachers, they were very ecstatic that we were potentially going back to STAR RIN. Same here. MAPS was good, but they, the, the data they were getting from MAPS was nothing compared to what STAR RIN offered.
Isn't, and if we're out of the MAPS deal, we don't, we're not obligated for anything?
Well, we, we're, our contract for the school, into the school year.
This year.
Yes, and, and there, this, uh, vendor's letting us start, they're giving us two months free, so we'll just finish this year if we want to screen some kids or not. I'm not making it a mandatory thing, obviously, um, but then we would start for the next school year.
Good.
It also has another feature that I've had teachers ask about, it, it groups the kids based on their data. And so the teachers already know, like, if they need to work on this skill, these are the kids that need to work on that skill. And it drops into another program that we have that already has a lesson built for them too. So there were just other features that they're gonna gain from that, um, that they weren't getting with MAPS, so.
Good.
So any questions?
I was just wondering, because we had talked about, we're changing all the time.
I agree, I agree, I agree, I agree.
But really, we're back.
But we're really going back, yeah.
Yes, and we plan on doing training, um, because we do have a lot of new teachers that haven't done it, so we wanna make sure that they're aware of it. Um, but we do, we'll have veteran teachers that know how to use it.
Well, and I think for the board's edification, the, the issue really, um, predated even me, that we were moving towards MAPS. Um, I was familiar with it, so because it was something I was already familiar with and the district was wanting to move in that direction, it was a pretty easy transition into it. But I think when Alicia took over, her concern continued to be the teachers and were they able to use the data? And I think what she has discovered dealing with the principals is that their comfort level and the amount of data that is now in STAR RIN that wasn't in STAR RIN years ago is now making it more palatable to utilize that rather than MAPS.
Isn't the assessment easier to administer too?
It is.
Wasn't it, they had to shut down to do MAPS, didn't, didn't you do it all, half a day or something?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it did take a long time, yeah. And that, that was the biggest complaint really from teachers is the time that it was taking. It was like secondary level, it was more than one period, so it went over to another day.
And STAR RIN also made some improvements, especially from my campus, because at the kindergarten level, it was just an early reading assessment, which had nothing, it had no correlation to first grade. So I couldn't do anything with the data, I, I couldn't, and it, it did go into first grade, but now they fixed it and it's a smooth transition. So my data can go on to Hutchins, and that was a big plus for the Kinder first grade students that they fixed.
Any other discussion, question?
One-year contract?
Yes, one-year contract.
Yeah, that's.
That is for one year, yes.
Uh, if there's no further questions or discussion, I'll seek a motion to approve the contract with Renaissance assessments. Motion by Mr. Drew Brown, second, uh, Mr. Vallejo, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. The, uh, next item in business is, uh, the germ blast contract?
Uh, yes, um, uh, have the proposal for, uh, germ blast for our renewal for the entire district. Uh, would have been a, a cost of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and fifty cent. They have given us a discount, so it's basically gonna be eighty thousand dollars. This isn't a, an ESAR expenditure.
Is or is not?
It is.
Is.
Yeah, it is. And what germ blast actually does is actually come in and they basically treat our surfaces, um, give us, uh, an analysis of the different germs. Um, give us, uh, an analysis of the different germs that we may have in different areas. Uh, and how we need to kinda, kinda treat.
That's twice a year?
Three times.
And, and one of the things I would like to point out about this particular contract is that it also gives us. Information that we're able to share with WAN. And to see how their, their cleaning is going for the district, so, um, it's been really successful to, to help in that partnership. Back for more?
Oh, I'm all prepared with Ezra.
They do the whole, the whole thing.
This is one of the.
It keeps a couple of kids in school.
Right. I'll seek a motion? Motion by Mr. Gortick, second, Mr. Irwin, all in favor, raise your right hand, oppose, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Uh, next is consider approval of new line interactive flat panels.
That's Mr. Wells again.
Uh, actually, food service.
Food service.
Food service. My apologies, food service.
And, and basically on our food, food service management, uh, contract, there's going to be an adjustment. Uh, for, uh, basically seven percent increase in the cost of meals, uh, based on inflation. And food costs actually just going up, and so, uh, we have an adjustment to the, uh, food service, uh, management contract. And we were just, uh, it's just gonna be up for us to be able to, um, add that seven percent cost increase.
This, for this year?
Yes, actually, so what the, um. Ag department basically said, well, I say ag department, you know.
Yeah.
TDA, Texas Department of Agriculture, uh, what they're actually gonna do is they're going to also allow those, uh, food service managers. To actually go back and recoup cost even in the fall. So basically what they'll do is they'll send us an adjustment to what we've already built out, built out. Uh, and so we're gonna have to pay a little bit more, however, we're still, you know, whether you guys know or not. We're running a pretty much a seven hundred thousand dollar fund balance in food service. Uh, where we're actually going to be doing all of our renovations to the cafeterias, uh, like we're buying new equipment at the high school, we're gonna be putting in new lines. So we're making money in that area.
But this isn't to approve next year's contract, we've already done that.
Yes, we're, no, we're, we're, we're actually on a five year, uh, uh, we're, we're finishing up a, a five year contract.
Okay, um, so with that, I'll take, uh, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of food service management contract. So, have a motion by Mr. Irwin, second by Mr. Dubrock, all in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Now we're at the interactive flat panels.
Donald's here.
Yeah, so, Donald, yes, would you like to speak?
Sure, we're looking to replace some older outdated technology at some of the elementary campuses. Uh, basically the smart boards, which is the interactive panel that's actually mounted on the wall. Being projected to by projector, uh, we're, of course, being that everything's older, we're starting to have issues with them, so about last year. Mari was nice enough to, uh, want to pilot this, so she currently has fourteen, I believe, at her campus. That she got eight in this last summer, and then six more later in the year. And I think it's gone, there's been a little hiccup here or there, a lot of it beyond our control, but I think it's gone fairly well.
No, it's, it's done really well, the, uh, and then, we came over to teacher leaders to watch it and. They're on wheels, the sound, the, what you can do technology wise is just unbelievable. Uh, it just gives the teachers a little bit more freedom, when you're, you're locked in a room, when it's on the projector. And if you've ever lived with elementary teachers, every year they would come in and move stuff, and that was a knockdown dryout. But mainly, what, what, I, I saw all the work orders coming through. And my teachers and Donald were spending more time on putting work orders in and fixing the smart boards than we were using them. So that's when I started looking to, I knew we had, we had to replace them, but, uh, it's just the next level. The bulbs are very expensive and they use less power too.
Is it like a TV?
Yeah, it's a big TV, interactive touchscreen, seventy-five inch on a rolling stand.
It's like a big.
Yes.
So the smart boards are out?
Not, well, I mean, we're. If there, if there was enough money to replace them district wide, yes, but. So what we're asking for now is enough to finish off Myatt, and then Rebecca has, after she visited with Mari. Wanted pricing on to go ahead and do her, knock out her whole campus. So that's the, what we're looking for is forty-nine total, sixteen for Myatt and thirty-three at Northside.
And the other thing. That's one in every class.
Pretty, pretty much every classroom teacher, and then the fact that it's on wheels, then if I have one in the library and I'm doing the presentation in the cafeteria, I can roll that one down. Or if I need to exchange one up in, in another area of the school. It gives you a lot more flexibility with your, uh, technology needs that way.
How big are they?
Seventy-five inch.
Oh, okay.
But the sound and fixtures is really, really.
Way brighter, way clearer.
They were, they were impressed with the sound.
A seventy-five inch touchscreen, that's pretty, I mean, per, per unit basis, that's, that's pretty cheap.
It was only, when we looked at replacing the smart boards, it was only maybe fifteen, two thousand more for these. When you looked at the price of getting a brand new smart board and projector over this. It just didn't make sense to go ahead and.
A thousand dollars.
Maybe a thousand dollar difference between the two.
It's cheaper than like a ten inch touchscreen. Any questions, concerns? Uh, I'll entertain a motion to.
Uh, who, what fund are you paying it out?
Ezra.
Just thought I'd make sure that Mr. Dubrock was aware.
I'll seek a motion to approve the new line interactive flat panels, as presented. Motion by Ms. Smith, I'll second, second by Mr. Gortick, all in favor, raise your right hand, oppose, same sign, motion carries unanimously. The, uh. Next is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding seeking bids for renovation of new construction projects. At the administration and Meadow Lane Resource.
Well, board members, that, this one's me, so, um, I'll take just a few minutes to discuss it. A great amount of discussion took place with the board on several different occasions. Um, and you tasked me with, uh, going out and finding out some information. Um, must, much of this has been done in cooperation with, um, Amanda and Alicia and Demetrius. Um, and we, they worked with their staff to determine what would be the best. Method for us to move forward, so, uh, Mr. Wells is, we are, we are at a point where we need more direction from the board. We have information for you, and here's what I can tell you. Um, the, the, the idea is we need a place for improving the gaps in learning. Particularly amongst our really high need students. Right now, we have some of that involved with the disciplinary alternative educational program, where we're spending thirty thousand plus dollars a year. Renting a facility, so we're trying to bring that in-house. We have a facility over at MLRC that we believe is large enough to handle several groups. Discipline, an alternative high school, and then some behavior type issues for general education students. To help, uh, pull them off the campus for periods of time and yet not lose instructional opportunities. So that facility could potentially be housed at MLRC. But at MLRC, we also have special ed and all of our teaching and learning, all in our Red Star, everybody is in one building. And then we have the other part of our administrative staff over here. And so it becomes frustrating to those four departments, because there's, it's difficult to interact. We can't just walk over to the other person's office, we always have to set times and plans and meetings, and then there's the travel to and from. I know it sounds like none of that is insurmountable, but there are times where we need an answer, or we need to discuss things together. And we have a hard time pulling it, which is why we schedule once a week, which we would continue to do. But that may be the only time we get to speak as four interconnected departments. There's not enough space here, so that required us to find a bigger space. Uh, one of the ideas was to reconvert this space and then have to build additional space. So what I'm proposing to you tonight is the following, to build about double the size of space of this building. To the north as new construction, and to house a boardroom that is appropriate for a quality class for a school. Cause this room is not, it shares with a kitchen. Um, so there is no, it's difficult for the departments to meet together, and I'm not necessarily just talking about Demetrius, Alicia, Amanda, and myself. I'm talking about, um, when Barbara wants to speak to Vicky. Or, um, somebody in Amanda's office, the diagnosticians wanna talk to the business office. Those become the more difficult conversations, we have people coming and going, so the idea would be where we're all together. And there's only a hallway between us, so, um, we've developed a plan, I went out and nothing, none of these numbers are final. None of them, this is all preliminary, so basically, what we have determined. Is the, the numbers we gave you quite a while back are greatly reduced. When we were at five and a half million plus, um, we feel that with on the street bidding. People actually giving bids, if we did this, what would the cost be? To add another five thousand approximate square feet of new construction and renovate this building. We're looking at somewhere around three point zero five million. And to renovate the MLRC, we're looking at about one point one seven five million. So a grand total of somewhere in the area of four point two five million. Four point three million, so Demetrius is looking at, and we're looking at partial, partially. Funding this through Esser to potentially funding all of it through Esser. It's just gonna depend upon how we promote it, so we don't want the board to think that we're, we know we're gonna be able to fund this all through Esser. Cause I don't know if that's an option, this is an awful lot of construction. We do believe everything is geared towards learning loss. Just pulling our staffs together, we think will be critical in helping with learning loss. An example is the Renaissance that, um, Alicia was talking about today. You know, it took us a long time to get all of that organized, because Demetrius was over here, she was over there. You know, people over here were looking for Demetrius and he was over there, or they were looking for Amanda and she was over here. So we feel that this whole package of having one facility. For all of the administrative staff to service all five campuses, and then that building being used, uh, to service the high at-risk kids.
So, is there additional square footage being added to Meadow Lane?
No.
It'll be exist, in the existing footprint?
Well, I shouldn't say that, no, we will square off the building.
Right, cause it is kind of a weird shape.
It is a weird shape.
So how many seats does the, our space that we lease at Northside, how many, how many seats do we have now?
About.
Twenty-four on the DAP side and about forty on the HLP side. We would be able to expand that tremendously, which we may need to do pending legislation.
What's tremendously?
We feel like we can, we can serve at least ninety people without much, without much difficulty. The, the present drawing, um, has one, two, three, four, five, six potential spaces. And a cafeteria, now we would not cook food there, but we would deliver food there.
So, this would, uh, this would give us an opportunity, which would expand our alternative placement capabilities. That would include like, go all the way to the fourth grade, right?
Potentially the fourth or fifth grade.
In the, that's what.
How long can we go?
That's what the state allows, right? Fourth or fifth?
I think you'd go fifth grade.
Fifth grade, so you, we would actually, actually have that option to, to. Have those placements.
It would also give us the ability to possibly go to a level three, which would include like a boot camp type thing. We have, there would be space there for the outside door.
It doesn't, doesn't look that big to do offices. I'm, I'm thinking.
Right.
I mean, so how many square feet do we have at the lease space, do we know?
Over at, uh.
Northside.
Uh, I think it's a little four thousand.
How big is that though?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight hundred.
Seventy-eight hundred.
It's not quite double, but, but y'all, this is putting in, this is putting in, uh, gang restrooms. It's putting in, uh, gang restrooms that are separated, so there'd be boys and girls on one side where it presently is. And then boys and girls on the other side where Amanda's diagnosticians are. So over there right now is like, um, shower, couple of restroom stalls. But mostly it's a, it was a high need special ed facility, and we would convert those into two separate, um, restrooms. One on each side, and then in the middle would be the cafeteria, and then all around the outside would be.
So Amanda would be over here, but, and it would just be classrooms over there, no offices?
No offices, nothing, all instruction, the entire, the entire facility, seventy-eight hundred square feet would be used to serve kids.
And we could increase that capacity by a third, almost, we're at sixty-four now, we could go to.
I'm, I'm gonna say we're probably not at sixty-four, I, I'm, I'm gonna say we're closer to fifty.
Fifty-four, fifty-four.
Almost doubling it.
Almost doubling it. I'm just counting everybody that's in here in, um.
And how many offices will be here for?
Everybody.
Everybody who.
How many offices are there?
We got, we got, we got extra room, we will have extra room and a huge boardroom, so in essence, um.
Sometimes we build and then we outgrow it before we even.
No, we won't outgrow it. Um, Vicky, do you wanna, um. I'm gonna have to ask for these back, because these are, these are drawings that are not for publication. Could you mind making the board, that's why I didn't make them in advance board, I will tell you that, I was really concerned about.
Touchscreen, thanks.
We, we, we could use a touchscreen, but Donald didn't put one in here, cause we're not in board. So in essence, uh, board members, we're looking at somewhere, let's just, let's just say four point three million.
So, in a nutshell, you know, what we're gaining is by this, I see is. One of our, one of our major, uh, emphasis points for the last. I don't know, six, seven years has been discipline, okay, and. And if you're gonna do something about discipline, one of the things that we've heard time and time again from all the staff is that it would be nice. That when you have these discipline problems that are just ongoing and ongoing with the same, same kids, and they need constant intervention. It'd be nice if you could actually get them to a place where it was, where you could get them out, out of the classroom for a while at least. Some of them even longer than a while, but this would give the district a chance to do that. That would play into our, our goal of improving student discipline. But also improving instruction, because now the teachers are freed up to hopefully dedicate that time to instruction rather than discipline.
It would also allow us to separate our junior high and high school students, right now they are currently in the same.
That was what I was gonna say, is it, and you can't, you can't make that kinda move and just say, okay, well now we're gonna put fifth graders over there. You cannot put fifth graders in the same room with high schools, it, it, you just can't, it's, and I don't even know if there's a law. It, you just can't, it's, and I don't even know if there's a law against it, but it is absolutely bad business. Yeah, but, so there's that. The other side of the coin is that, um, we've long talked about doing something that was an alternative high school that would help us with. It's doing what all the districts around us are doing when we all get our grades on our campus, our campus grades. And, and you're like, well, how the hell did they get a B or, and I think it is A, I've been on that campus. Well, most of those, most of those campuses have this alternative high school where these kids that are not, they're not coded to your high school. There are certain things that they do count for, but, but they're not coded to your high school. So you, it, it will give you the advantage there. That's another, that, that ties into another district goal of improving our overall state, uh, recognition rate. Okay, so that, that's another thing. The biggest thing that I think, those two things, discipline, the, the opportunity to have us a different high school that's not coded to El Campo High School. Those are great things, but when you start doing that at Meadow, at, at Meadow Lane Learning Center. You displace all the admin staff that's over there. So you gotta do something with, with that. And the consequence of that is that while we do need a bigger, better, more improved, more cohesive unit at the, at the admin building. You have, gives you the opportunity to move those people over here because you have to move them because you're trying to accomplish all these discipline goals with this other building, well, you gotta do something with this building, which is, this building has, has long since been outgrown, obviously. Cause we have spillover at a whole nother building. And, and, um, you know, when we do have recognition or heaven forbid, we have a, a contentious, uh, you know, uh, topic on the agenda. Y'all have all been here when it's standard room only and there's people, there's people out there, you know, in the foyer that can't hear, can't see. And, and this is a public meeting. I mean, this is, they, they are the public and they deserve to be, you know, in the room with us. So, uh, there is, there's the benefit of, of taking the opportunity to not build a huge boardroom, but build a boardroom that, that is more conducive to the size of district that we are. That's my opinion of the, of why you would do something like this.
While I look at the board members just a minute.
There's no doubt that we, that we need to do it, it's just paying for it and if the ESER funds, when would we vote for sure? If the ESER funds would.
So it will actually take a process of us actually amending the grant. Uh, we're gonna also have to, um, uh, be able to, uh, I mean, like, so I'll give you like what it actually says.
This would have to be a.
Yes, like, so, so, so any, anytime we're gonna do something like this, it's gonna take us submitting it for approval. So anytime once we send, send this in, it's just like, uh, when we're doing HVAC. We have to send it to them, let them know what we're doing, they give us a thumbs up, yay or nay. Um, on whether or not they support the, uh, the expenditure.
So we have to wait for them to approve?
So they have an approval process and we'll, we'll go in, we'll submit and then they'll.
Then you'll have to wait.
And the board, and the board would know that, I mean, what we're, the most, what we're considering tonight is just the ability to move forward and get a plan together. So we're not approving.
Correct.
Going forward, but before we officially go forward, we would have a, a determination of what.
We would know exactly what we can and what we can't do.
Right.
And, and because we have to also look at what, so in ESER three, twenty percent of that has to be spent on learning loss. Okay, so, and we, we know that ESER three is going to expire next September. ESER two actually expires, uh, this September. Uh, so we still have, we have about one point five million dollars that we're gonna have to get, uh, and which we have plans for. Uh, but we also have to look at some of the costs that we are actually putting off to ESER, uh, currently. Because when you start to talk about, I mean, cause there is only so much money. So I mean, we can, you know, and so once it runs out, you know, it's, it's out. Uh, but, so we still have costs that we're allocating to ESER, uh, such as our, our Macklemore contract.
Right.
All of those things. So it's not like, I mean, so we're gonna have to look at what we're currently expending and say, okay, this is how much we can actually even afford to do from ESER. Then we'll, then we'll.
Back into that.
Yeah, and we'll amend the grant and try to get approval for what we know that we can, we.
Tell me the totals again, one point three? No, no, on the ESER remaining.
Uh, roughly, so ESER three is eight million. So we have about six, six million that's not, I would say quote unquote allocated left in, uh, ESER three. Uh, and then we have, um, uh, one point five roughly in the ESER two.
So doing a project like this and, and, I mean, we've, as a board, we know that we've had, we've made a list of facility needs that need to be addressed, obviously this was, this plays right into that. But when you go into any of this stuff, it, just the fact that there's a chance that you can offset a portion of it with ESER funds is obviously.
It's, that's a big plus because, because realistically, if I'm sitting here and I'm like, I mean, there's a lot of things that we do have planned for ESER. But I mean, if, I would say that we'd be able to get at least half of it.
And it's a one-time, and, and it's, and it's one of those things that we always talk about is that it's great to, to do things with, do one-time things with one-time money. Cause you don't wanna, I mean, it wouldn't be an ongoing expense that you had to live with after ESER, you know, dissolved.
Correct.
So. If we could do part of it with ESER, it'd be good.
You know.
Figure out how to fund, you know, fund ESER, uh, pay for it. How much we can use.
Right, and.
Planning for that.
Yeah, and to that, I mean, our, I think our fund balance is sitting at, sitting at the twenty-seven percent.
Twenty-six point.
Twenty-six, yeah. Probably some money there that we could.
And, and yet our goal is always twenty percent. And, and so we are, we are, we've done a good job of, of, you know, being responsible there, so there, there is. Yeah, yeah, for sure, when I say we have them in the districts. Obviously that's Bob and everybody sitting in the room, but, uh.
So what, just off top, rough, what would seven percent of our fund balance, or we knocked it from twenty-seven back to twenty?
You're looking at ten million and so, so you're looking at, you want to.
Two and a half?
About, about a million.
About a million, roughly a million.
That we could spend to stay above twenty percent?
Yeah, you'll be roughly at twenty percent if you spend about, right at a million.
Well, I don't, like, I'm, I'm not opposed to this, but I'm, I have concerns about paying for it. Um, especially if we're limited on the ESER stuff. And we have definite needs on space, I mean, we need to do some things with our alternative program for sure. Um, I don't, and James alluded to our, you know, our discipline, our focus on and our discussions of discipline. Um, this building's not gonna fix discipline. I mean, it's an opportunity to provide additional programs that we're not providing right now. But it's not gonna take that kid out of the classroom. I mean, there's no new program unless we go to a level three DAP kind of deal. The programs that we would offer would not be in new, like it wouldn't be new stuff. We're not servicing many elementary kids we have before, but I don't think we, I don't hear much discussion of that anymore. But, I mean, there's definite need for more space than what we have over there, for sure. Especially if we're gonna have a true freestanding alternative program. But it's, I mean, it's a money question for me.
I think you'll be up for discipline though, you get them out of the classroom.
But you can't.
Let the teachers do their job there where they're not dealing with, uh, discipline problems.
But it's not, but you're not gonna create a new, there's still only DAP.
Well, yeah, but, but they're not, I think you're missing the point. They're not in the classroom with the twenty, twenty to twenty-five kids that are trying to learn.
No, I'm not arguing that, I completely agree with that. But this would not be a new program.
Right.
Like, we already have a DAP.
No, I know.
I mean, it's not.
But this, but this provides more for it.
It would, it should, it could provide more space, but there's other ways we could provide more space also. But this would provide, it's just, I don't want it to think, I don't want us to think we're gonna build a new building and then we're gonna be able to move a bunch of kids in the DAP that we have.
It may, it may help it though, if you split those kids up a little bit. Uh, it may help the DAP program too, where it can give more, you know, more help for them.
Right. It could be, it could be a better facility, but it will not be a new program. We already have a program.
I know we got a program, but I think it'll help the program. So it could be a benefit for the program.
In this action item, you're, you're just wanting to know if we wanna move forward seeking bids, not build it then?
Correct. To where I can, these numbers that I've got, I am, I, I told Dimitri when, when he and I first met about this. I feel pretty comfortable with these numbers. He's a little bit more pessimistic about the numbers.
That's his, that's his general attitude about it.
I had to be candid to everybody, so, um, I believe that the work that was done behind the scenes to come up with these numbers is, is probably fairly accurate. But until we actually go out and say, this is what we're doing. Um, so there would be more continuity to the building plan. The architect would become more involved. We'd get finalized plans, then go out and look for bids to give you a, a definite number. I'm gonna tell you, I share Mr. Dubrock's concerns about spending four million dollars, and I just do. I, I appreciate Mr. Wells optimism that we could look at fifty percent of this being ESER.
And we, and, and, and there, there, there's ways we can.
Yep.
I mean, the money, I'll figure that part out.
Yep, but what I'm saying is I, I, I share his optimism that we could get to fifty percent at a minimum for ESER. That brings me a little bit, um, more comfort in moving forward. I am not comfortable, um, looking at the board and saying we're gonna spend all four million of this out of the general fund and our fund balance. I don't feel comfortable with that number because we continue to wanna do things for our staff that are equally as important, that would, would go a long way at saying we have to provide the special ed, teaching and learning, business office and superintendent's office to be a little bit, um, uh, displaced. The bigger issue for me is the thirty thousand dollars we've been sending over to Northside every year. And the fact that we don't have spaces, this one will hold about ninety people. And that is with two restrooms and being able to keep everything separate. Middle school's separate, high school's separate, alternative high school's separate. Right now, they're all kind of hodgepodge together. And I don't think that's the direction Mr. Fleaner would like for his alternative school to go. So basically what we're trying to do now is to decide, to get the board to decide, is this something do you wanna look at? Where I can put more teeth into developing the plan with SCH. And then going out and start seeking professional bids, cause I'd have to put it out for bid to get real numbers to come back.
Well, I, I like the plan and my, my concern is just like everybody else, it's the financial and the, we're not gonna know what that is until we get bids. So I make the.
Well, before you do that, I wanna just, because, uh, um, Kathy was asking about office space. So the, the, the drawing I gave you about office spaces was, this is the third rendition phase, this was the, the second rendition phase. So the one you're seeing, the, the one I'm passing out now is the third rendition phase. And so, um, in that particular phase, you can see we've gone less to individual office spaces. And more to, uh, large group areas. So for example, over there, uh, if you look in, um, if you hold the, the drawing this direction. So that you can like read it. If you look at the upper left-hand corner, you'll notice there are seven spaces up there, actually, um, eight spaces up there that are uh, for diagnosticians, et cetera. And you'll see that there's a special ed director over there in the corner. So you can see right there, we're gonna have enough room for, um, eight or nine people and a work area. And if you go to the bottom, you'll notice that we have payroll, communications, federal programs, assistant superintendent, et cetera. And then we also have room for the assistant superintendent, the secretary, but you'll notice we've gone to more workspaces rather than individualized offices. That is part of the reason the cost came down, cause if you look at the first one, everybody's got individual offices. Which means individual doors, door frames, um, air conditioning where they have return air and flowing air, lot more, uh, vents that have to go in, et cetera. So this has become a little bit more of a.
Sweet type?
Sweet type works in a simple, simplified, um, process. You'll also notice that when you look over at the boardroom, there have been issues where we have kind of reduced the size of the boardroom a little bit. Put more, more, um, office space under the boardroom. Um, we've also done some things about restrooms that make it more female friendly. So, um, and this is, this is not a final rendition, but you'll notice there's, there's spaces for small workrooms. Like if, uh, if HR, if they wanna come in and have a meeting with a, with an employee to have a private space to go. Whereas right now, they have to go into Tracy's office and everybody that walks in sees them in this. So.
I'll, uh.
Please do not think we're, we're asking for this to be approved, that's not where I am. I, but I need, if I'm gonna do my job for the board, I'm gonna need a little bit more opportunity to give you finalized numbers.
Questions, discussion, anything like that? Uh, with that, I'll seek a motion to take action to allow, uh, the administration to seek bids for renovation and new construction projects at the administration and Meadow Lane Resource Building.
Can I ask one more question? When would we know, like how we, we get bids, then we try to amend the grant? You have to have the bids first, would we have an idea on this before?
Uh, we, no, I'll, I'll actually, uh, I'll start that process here pretty quick. I'll, I'll be able to, I'll, I'll have a pretty good idea pretty quick.
We are, we are looking in, and Dimitri's already started, we're looking into amending the grant right now to find out what we can do.
So it might be a simultaneous, we might find out what the actual construction costs are gonna be and.
Yes, that is our goal, to be able to bring those back to you. Um, and just like getting this for you for tonight, um, we went on to overdrive to make sure that all these things got planned and prepped. Cause it's only been since the last board meeting when we started.
Yeah.
Asking us to do this. So we're in overdrive right now.
I'll seek a, a motion.
Yes, I have a motion.
I have a motion, sorry, I have a motion by Mr. Irwin.
Sir.
A second by Mr. Dorte. All in favor, raise your right hand, pose the same sign, motion carries unanimously. That will take us all the way to closed session, right?
Yes, sir, and here's, here's what I would say to everybody that's in the room. Um, there are, most everyone in this room is on the agenda on number nine personnel. You're more than welcome to state. Or you're more than welcome to ask me in the morning how it went.
Dimitri's the only one that's gotta worry.
Not really. Good, thanks, Ed.
Okay, the time, uh, the time is now eight ten. We will adjourn into closed meeting under Texas, the Texas government code five five one point oh seven four Personnel Matters.